All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth. Like to call the meeting to order invocation this morning. No, no one for invocation. You please be in and join me in.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comments?
Let me hear from the bid opening.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay. So we will move on approval of the minutes. Um, you want to put those table till next week when Ellen's back since I wasn't here, I will.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll move those to next week. Uh, can I start comments? Can I start?
I can't think of anything.
Um, I do not have anything. So we have new business. We have. Can you see if these were? All right, we have Catherine Sparks, Community Corrections Director with the Juvenile and Adult Services Discussion.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, I just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at this year so far. Um, so starting off with our financials for our workbooks, as you know, we were having problems with our FY twenty-four workbooks. I think we have hit the turning point with those in a good way. Um, the adult workbooks I have sent off to KDOC and they're taking a final look, but I'm expecting them to be approved. Um, and then as for the juvenile workbooks, I've sent my final look on those workbooks over to Mark. Um, I sent that late yesterday to him and so my hope is is that everything I put on him is accurate and then I can send those off to KDOC. Um, I decided they had to be done before I go out on maternity leave, so we've been pushing at them.
On those, do they actually, do you know what they found or is this has kind of been a habitual problem?
Yes.
With those and I think if we ever find the core reason, we're going to clean up things in the future.
There's several core reasons, I think is what I want to say. Um, the first is, is that uh, the FY twenty-three books, the director that was in between me and Shelley had not accurately completed those books. Um, so then KDOC took over to complete them. Unfortunately, they had account information on an account that did not belong to us, so they were saying we should have more money than we had. Um, which caused the first set of issues. Um, and then after that, due to us taking on juvenile intake beginning in FY twenty-four, we did not receive the funds to start that July first like we had to. So what we had to do was do journal entries after we did receive those funds and that kind of created a little bit of an issue, not that the journal entries are wrong or anything, but just making sure it was calculated correctly on how it was credited or taken from the account. So there was that part. Um, the other thing that I have found is when it comes to our reimbursement account, they in November of twenty twenty-three, we received notice that we couldn't have any co-mingling, co-mingling, sorry, co-mingling accounts. What we had was our grant accounts were combined with our reimbursement accounts. Our reimbursement accounts are the accounts that um, anybody on bond that makes a payment to us, that's where that goes. We don't put any state funding into those accounts. So I had to separate those out. I used the information that KDOC told me to separate those out based off of how much was in there. As I'm going back and I went back to the last quarter of FY twenty-three forward, I found out that that wasn't correct exactly on how much money was in there. So it was just several things that weren't exactly correct that was throwing me off is how I'm looking at. I don't know if Mark has another way of saying it.
Okay, well, that's, that's great because I mean, the underlying issue, I mean, it's going to keep recur- reoccurring if we don't take care of it.
Yes, yes. So.
Glad they found it.
So that's what we're looking at right now. So I haven't, there is some money that I need to transfer from one account to the, the next account to make them at the right balances. But I'm waiting for KDOC to approve those workbooks before I do any kind of transfers of any kind. So. So that's where we're at on that. Um, we also were approved the Community Programs Grant. That is the grant that it's a two-year grant where we approved for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Um, this is a grant that is allowing us to continue our prevention and intervention programming. Um, along with hire a full-time therapist to work with the youth that belong to that population. So we're able to work with any youth that are currently on probation or pending adjudication or have done a crime or committed an act that could be a crime. Um, any youth with a behavioral health crisis. And then any youth that has been administered a risk assessment through DCF or one of their contracted agencies. Um, the goal is, is to put in some preventions and interventions to avoid them going further in the system as they age. So, um, we have got, we did receive those funds, um, October first. Our programming has already begun. It's been going on since last year. Uh, we are pending the MOU with the Guidance Center and then they will hire the full-time therapist. So there is that one. Um, I have been doing some meetings with school districts, county attorneys, the defense attorneys, and we're pending to meet with DCF and their partners to make sure we get these services out there and let them know that these are still available and they actually enhanced over the last year.
Awesome.
So. Um, in regards to programming, we did start a program in the county jail, so we're offering decision points to currently adult clients that are assigned to us and in the county jail at this point in time. Um, decision points is a class that it's about four to five weeks and it helps identify what the risk behavior was and how it led to where I am at today. So kind of looking back and hoping that we can make a change on what's going to happen in the future. So we do have that going. Um, and then we also were able to start teaching two different groups at USC four oh nine during the school day. So we do one at the central school and one at the high school. We still have our after-school programs, but these are just different locations. Um, and then I have expanded our services. So I have active MOUs with the second and twenty-second judicial districts where we provide, if they refer a client to us, we can provide programming to them via Zoom. So we did get the okay through KDOC to do this, but we're all three small agencies that don't have the funding to normally just have a big programming ability and we're all rural and we all have intersecting clients. So the goal was is to get a bigger population that we can serve, um, to help us with future grants, but also to hopefully target the people that come through Atchison or, you know, Atchison, people that go through their locations. So we do have those active MOUs. Um, the only thing I'm waiting on is in the second judicial district, I am waiting for an MOU to be signed with the juvenile services. Um, I believe I'm going to get that here pretty soon. But we can provide services to them under the money, funding that we currently have. Um, for our FY twenty-six grants, which is coming up, uh, we did receive notice from KDOC that typically those grants opened up in March. They're opening up in January now. Um, so those should be opening here soon. I should not be out through all of January. However, I did just go ahead and make draft applications based off of previous applications. Um, so that if for some reason I'm out during the period of time that the applications are done, Kathy Crockett and Nikki McDaniel's has access to those draft applications. It has a draft budget and everything like that, so it should be kind of a fill-in-the-blank situation. Fingers crossed. So we'll see how that works. Um, KDOC did recently let us know, we previously had to turn in information on our reimbursement accounts. KDOC is no longer requiring any agency to provide any information on the reimbursement accounts. They're only concerned about how we're spending the money of the grants. So there is that. Um, currently we are supervising a hundred and nineteen clients. We have ninety-eight adult clients, nine juvenile clients, and twelve that are under bond supervision. Uh, and then my last thing is that obviously I plan on being out sometime in December, so while I am out, I have already worked with HR and Mark. Uh, Kathy will take care of supervision of all the employees and ensure that programming and everything continues. Um, and then Nikki is going to work with Mark on all of our financial needs for that period of time. But we're, we're stocked, so they shouldn't need much in financials.
It sounds like you've taken care of it.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah. But so that's all I have unless you guys have a question for me.
No, I mean, you do a great job of keeping us updated and perfect. That's good luck, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm forward to seeing you with a new addition to your family probably next time.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
All the best.
All right. So we have a little bit of time before our next item, which is executive session. Um, and that reminded me, I didn't write my note on my commissioner comments, but I wanted to ask, it was brought to my attention yesterday that or Michelle, are we night, are we nineteen days behind on our tax roll?
We are behind, yes, because I've been trying to get the deeds changed over on as many as I can.
Okay.
Because we were over eight hundred and fifty deeds behind by the time we got to work on them with the, the election.
Were eight hundred and fifty deeds behind?
They were. We are not now.
Oh, okay.
Right. That I've been trying to get more of them done.
How is that going to affect? Does that have an effect on more, like, how's that going to affect the mortgage companies or?
It, it will affect some of them, but like I said, I, Brady and I have both been working on them every chance we can.
Okay.
So.
Do you feel, when do you think we'll have them caught up?
She's going to probably not them caught up definitely before June. Like next June, because June is going to be when we recertify values.
Okay.
So we have a report that I can go in and we are going to keep running it. That gives us a difference between deed names and ownership names. And we're going to get that cleaned up because that's where, that's the tail tale of the ones that we're missing.
Is there any repercussions for our county to be behind? Like, is that the deadline? Is that why they count nineteen days behind or nineteen? Do they give like statutory deadlines to have the tax roll?
The tax rolls to the treasure.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And what is that?
Um, last year, I don't know, but last year I know I was doing things on the twenty-second, so it, the con, the communication between Connie and I have to be there because we have to verify the tax statements are correct. We have to verify that the information that goes on the tax statements with our, um, neighborhood revitalization and homestead is all something that we do together.
Okay. Is that something that we would be behind on when like before the tax sale and we published the tax sale properties? Some of them on there were sold, I guess, prior to, and then they showed up as like delinquent tax, but they sold the property several months before. Is that the process that would?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I've gotten the tax sale ones done, but there's others that sell, um, straight transfer.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But we're getting as many of those cleaned up as we can. There are a lot of, um, a lot of information we get from the deeds office that is like a transfer on death deed. We really don't have to do anything with that but noted.
Okay.
But if we have like a death certificate that comes through, we have to do investigative work to find out if there needs to be something done due to that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But so you're thinking we'll be caught up by June?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I'm actually thinking before that, but most definitely by June.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're on a timeline with someone joining us, correct, on the executive, so we need to wait. So on that one, do we have a sports complex?
Yes.
I mean.
Yes.
You can do it?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I received an email from Travis Greshman in regards to, um, some work that's being done at Memorial Hall.
Okay.
And, um, so I just, um, shared it with Mark and he created the, um, the request to the bank because it will come out of.
This would be within that four hundred thousand that we allocated to them to get work done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm just going to put some fillers in here if that's okay, because we have some time. Um, so this is a request for payment from the key, um, to L and L Construction in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for construction costs for concession and bathroom buildings at the Atchison Sports and Fitness at the sports complex. So they.
On that invoice, it should have what we've previously paid, what we've allocated and such.
Yes. I was going to say, I remember we, we, um, did a prepayment of forty thousand. So this one is asking for sixty thousand. You want to look at it? I haven't seen it. Or I call for a motion?
Which still will cover, do they have a time when they think they'll be?
I don't know that.
Come in for the next?
I don't know.
In so far, so they added the playground and then a concession and bathroom.
That's all I know.
Oh. Have to pull up what their wish list was they submitted to us. Awesome. You good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to, um, approve this request for payment to L and L Construction in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Um, for the construction costs of concession and bathroom buildings for the Atchison Sports Complex at the, um, Atchison Sports and Fitness at the sports complex. So a motion to approve.
So move.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes to the zero.
Something I have that you don't want to neglect.
Yep.
Uh, last week it came up and that is for the KAC representatives that we have to have a representative and an alternate picked. And we have to have that in by Friday, so we need to do that today.
Okay.
Did I, was there something, I put it back in the blue folder?
I think I put something in the folder.
I've put.
Basically stating that it was table from the last meeting.
I didn't make, I just, I just saw it on my reminder list to want to make sure if we get that.
Oh, it was in the paper, EMS. Okay, so this was tabled from last week, forty-ninth annual Kansas Association Counties. Voting delegate.
Are you going this year?
I'm not.
None of the commissioners are, so.
Okay.
Um, Michelle, did I understand that you and Mark are both going?
I know Mark pressure is.
I am not going to go. Sure. I have a conflict. I'm not going to be here next week. I can't miss two commission meetings back to back, so I'm not going to be able to go on Thursday. Um, I looked at the agenda. There's two grant meetings out there, but after reading them, I've already done one of the grant classes with the presenter, so I don't feel that that's maybe justifiable of going just for that, um, and spending the money. So I'm electing not to do, not to go. Not with what I know now. Yeah, I can't do it.
Okay.
So.
So.
Are you going?
I haven't decided. Um, I was waiting to see. Because I know nobody else is going.
Holly is going.
Holly is.
Is she going?
Okay.
I'm not going to want to show.
Hi.
Um, I did print the agenda if you wanted to look at it.
Yes, definitely.
So is it okay for us to assign Holly as our voting delegate?
She's on.
So I, I guess I should figure out what that, you have generally been our voting delegate, right? So you just have to go to a certain?
There's a meeting that they want you to go to.
Okay.
Um, K, K camp is the same way. Um, but I don't remember if it's KAC or if it's K camp that wants the elected official as one, at least one elected official.
Okay.
No matter who it is, but.
Okay.
Um.
So can we appoint you and then Holly as, um,
Alter.
The alternate, and then you can explain to her what needs to be done if.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to appoint, um, Michelle Phillips, our Atchison County Clerk, um, as our Atchison County Voting Delegate for the forty-ninth annual Kansas Association and Counties Conference and Ex- Exhibition.
So move.
Okay. I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero. So Michelle, primary. Holly.
Well, but it's, I apologize, it just came out of Michelle, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
Here, we need to vote, um, Holly being the the.
Oh, sorry, I just do, Michelle, I did. So I've looked for a motion to approve Holly as the alternate, um, voting delegate member.
Oh, so move.
Okay, I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero. Thanks, Eric. All right. So we're going to have an executive session here at ten thirty-five. Um,
You want to move into it, we can try. Make sure you can, he's probably move on.
Okay. So, um, and it's commission.
Um, county counselor, HR and finance. And then K camp.
You want us to extend the time since we're going in early? The twenty, or does it matter? Twenty-five? Okay.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session. At ten twenty-two AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel was allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine V one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of execution, executive session in twenty-five minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement and those present will be uh, three commissioners, or two commissioners, HR, Finance Director and K camp Representative. And, and Pat Henderson, County Counselor.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero.
You'll have to step out until we can come back in, so thank you for your.
Right into. Okay, we are back in open session. Couple minutes and then, uh, we will be ready for Joe Snyder and a bid opening here.
I mean, it gives, have we gone?
Three.
Three.
Okay, it's ten fifteen, so we have Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent with the Bridge Replacement Project, uh, number RS two ninety bid opening, and then after that he will be doing a department update and Bridge two ninety, uh, notice your.
So after, after we open these and uh, we've read them out loud, they will be sent to, uh, Swab Eaton. And Swab Eaton will go over the bids and then when I get done, I will go talk to Swab Eaton. And we will be back with a recommendation today.
Okay.
The first one is from Don Langer and Sons Constructions. Now, I'm going to read, read this. There's two start dates. One would be right away and I believe it's December ninth and the second one is September first, twenty twenty-five. And if I understand this right, whichever one used Don Langer would be September
Yes.
first, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So their bid is seven hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. And this is part of the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement, uh, grant from KDOT. The second one is from King Construction Company from Heston, Kansas. And they agreed to start on nine one twenty-five also. And their bid is one million two hundred and twenty-four thousand four dollars and twenty cents. Last one is from Ebert Construction from Wamigo, Kansas. They also would start nine one of twenty twenty-five. And their bid is seven hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And I also at this time have the engineered estimate at nine hundred and twenty-six thousand eight thirty-one seventy-five. And I've had this since yesterday, so. Well, I want to thank you all three for competing. We can sit. And like I said, we will, uh, here in about half an hour, hopefully have a, an answer on it, but it's.
Joe, the only question I have is on the first one, you had the two dates.
So there was an early start date and a late start date. They all elected the late start date.
Okay, so I, I didn't know whether.
Yeah, and I didn't know.
You didn't read that on the second too, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
No, but they all selected the September first.
Okay. That's fine, thank you. I'm going to just make sure it was clear.
Okay, and, uh, Casey, I handed you a couple.
Yes, I'm right here.
Do you want to read them? You want me to read them? I don't care.
Yep, no, I have two purchase orders. Um, the first one will be paid out of the ARPA funds, um, to approve paving for the mill and patching of Osage and Aughorn Road in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So I have a motion to approve.
I move.
Well, the second, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero.
And that that job is finished.
Thanks.
It is finished. The, the patching on that is done now. Uh, I have a right-of-way permit for Brian Martin to put in a uh, Colbert eighteen by forty on two eighty-six with a greely. That needs to be okay.
All right, so. Alright, so this is a right-of-way application. Brian Martin. Placement of an eighteen by forty Colbert on two eighty-six west of Greeley as presented by a Road and Bridge Superintendent. I have a motion to approve. And I will second moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero. I still have one more.
Yep.
Okay.
Then I have a purchase order. Um this is also out of the ARPA funds. The wellborne sales for sixty-inch arched ten-gauge illuminated forty-foot culvert. Um in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. Uh do I have a motion to approve?
Is this the one that we're not gonna be able to put in?
No.
Oh, okay. We talked about something else this morning, so I just go.
No, this is this is different.
Okay, also move.
Okay, I will second moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes two to zero. And again, all these ARPA expenses that are out of the six hundred and sixty-six thousand that was allocated last year, so.
Okay, so uh on Iowa Road Phase One. Uh bid letting, we only had one contractor respond with a bid last week and then the bid was. Five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. And the uh engineered estimate was three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. And at this time, I would recommend that we do not accept this bid from Leavenworth Excavating and Equipment. It's uh above the engineered estimate and that would be my opinion.
Uh what the engineered estimate was.
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two.
Three sixty-five, eight seventy-two.
Yeah, their their bid was five twenty-eight, one twenty-three fifty. With a difference of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah.
But that's my recommendation.
Okay, I mean, I would be in favor. I would be along with that recommendation.
And they'll be be moved forward in a different path, so.
And then you'll just talk contact the the contractor and let him know that our engineered estimate was that much lower and. We don't have the funds currently set aside to to complete the project.
Yes. And uh that's about it. If you guys have any questions about anything going on. We're out pushing some trees off this morning from all the way in yesterday.
I think I do have some questions. Sorry. I have to get caught up a little bit. Um one was. Um I spoke, um I got a phone call yesterday from Mrs. Brack. Her husband was here two months ago on September seventeenth and um she was wondering where we're at on the two hundred nineteenth. Road um. Culvert because she can't get gravel delivered until we replace it. And so it's kind of put them in a bind. And they understand or they understood that we were working on easements in the core, but the timeline of two months ago, they haven't heard anything and wanted to know where we're at.
So Pat, how close are we on the easements?
Is that the that's new one?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we we had the an issue with the legal description of the uh. The property, which I think we got resolved. At last week, Friday or something. So.
And.
We don't have, we don't have them yet.
But they're close and then I have not heard anything from I'm waiting on the core.
Okay.
And I talked to them uh about three weeks ago.
Okay.
So I will.
Sides of the road is what we're working on getting?
Well, there, yeah, there was some question about how many landowners it impacted. Uh we originally thought just one and then we thought it might be as many as four. But then it turns out, I think we're back saying it's just the one landowner.
Okay.
It's a it's a strange pie piece.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
So have you been in contact with them to get an easement?
She has been in contact with them. I have a letter drafted to them.
Okay.
But I haven't sent it.
Okay.
And then uh we'll take that to them and if we get her to sign it then with this, I will get a hold of the core again today. I will call it.
Okay.
But I talked to him not too long ago. They sent me a letter on the other one and I asked them where they were here and they were waiting on the uh. DWR or the uh. Hands of Wildlife to respond and he said sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, so.
And the easement, we've talked to the folks.
I talked.
And they're on board.
They were when I talked to them, yes.
And we have the letter drafted, so we should be able to have that by next week.
Hopefully, I mean. Yeah, hopefully, but no, I talked to her before we did anything. So unless she would change her mind, we should be good.
Okay.
And if she does, then we'll figure out how to get it in there in one day.
Okay.
So but we have the material and everything ready to go.
Okay. Um another thing, they were waiting on an answer back on. You were gonna respond to Mr. Mole and all those, Mrs. Fisher, on what you found out.
Um you may wanna go into executive session to talk about this, but the. I I feel com- comfortable saying we wanted to make sure. That legally, we were completely correct about the roads still being open and then also wanted to make certain that our public. Online map. Showed it as an open road before we pulled down places to open road in just to your answer. So. We could go into executive session if you wanna talk about that in more detail.
I'm not sure. I just wondered, I don't know that we need executive session. They're just all waiting on an answer from us and. You had said you were gonna send an email to them and and that with that next week and nobody's heard anything and you've been on the emails with everyone. So everybody's just waiting on a response from you and I'm like. We're just curious.
Well, I think it's a little more nuanced than that and I I really think the discussion shouldn't be a public discussion about it. Um so if if you want more discussion, I think we should move into executive session.
Okay.
I don't think more discussion, it it's unnecessarily necessary on my part, my part.
So on the roads situation, cause that's what we're waiting on, Seventeenth Street, if we could extend it through and have a township. Road all the way through. Like, I guess I'm just, I don't think there's a point of executive session because. We can't say anything from executive session and they're just waiting on an answer. I just don't know. What the answer is on the road status.
Nick Roger.
Oh.
I don't know if you can see.
You have, sorry, no, I can't see you. I'm sorry. I couldn't see you.
Um and actually, this is one of the things that I wanted to bring up at the nine o'clock meeting, but but the reality is uh. We've got like seventy or eighty pages of documentation on this road. The fact is, we know what we know. We don't know what we don't know. So if you ask me to be absolutely certain, I can be as certain as I can from what I have. I can't ever tell you what I don't know. And and the situation is the parcel fabric does not currently show that right-of-way going through there. I've spoken with Holly. About this issue already this morning and said, I would ask the Commission whether they wanted us to adjust the parcel fabric to show. Uh those right-of-ways going through there as we have determined from reading the legal documents on. The road research. That's a question to the Commission. If so, then Holly will make the authorization to proceed.
So you're asking us to determine if there's easements? Are there easements?
No, I'm not asking you to determine. I'm asking you to to tell us if you want us to adjust the parcel fabric to show those easements. There are easements all over the county that don't show up until there's some more documentation somewhere that causes them to go on the map. You just discussed one just a second ago when you were talking about this culprit that you were dealing with. There was never a right-of-way shown down there until a survey was done in the last six months that brought that to our attention. There are right-of-ways all over Ashes County that would easily. Greatly increase the amount of roads you have, but they're just not used anymore, just like this parcel, just like this road is not. It should not been in use.
So that's kind of the same situation though with Trego Road that they didn't have anything on record and but we needed easements.
It's not the same.
It's not the same.
Okay.
On Trego Road, we definitely had road record.
Okay.
And we did not have a road record and on this road, we do have a road record. On Rawlins Road, we do have road records.
Trego Road, you had no record, Doc.
Okay. So on this road, there's a road record?
There is.
It's not a road record. You're dealing with a couple of miles. It's not all done as one piece. It's done as numerous pieces. And so by the time we finish with the property research, we also have cases in there where it was proposed for vacation. But denied by the Commission. I mean, you've got gobs of data. It's not like you're saying, oh, here it is. It says it's a right-of-way this wide. They originally put it in and this piece, this piece and this piece, and then they changed this piece and this piece and this piece. And then they make modification to it as you go. It's not a real simple here to there. It's uh. If I haven't sent it all to you, I certainly will. But when you're finished reading it, you will be more confused than you were in the beginning when you started. I I can assure you of that.
You just bullet point it for us as far as what happened and what didn't happen. And what didn't happen and where it stands today.
This is the bullet points of of where it is.
So where does it stand today?
We believe there is a right-of-way and I've told you, I I made that apparent, apparent. I spent half a day yesterday. Adjusting where those lines should go. I had Jack do several days work on them. I spent half a day yesterday adjusting where those lines should go so that they fit into the public land survey system correctly. In the process of doing that, they will also modify a few property lines because. These properties were put in there when they were just drafters and they just adjusted things and made things all fit. When we start putting them in, we start looking at the legal description of all the tracks which abut these. And how they all work and where it shifts from one location to the other and all of the numbers that we can put in there. Uh I'm just telling you, it's uh. The real quick and dirty is, yes, there is a right-of-way. Um I've got a map of what that right-of-way is. I've shown it to Holly and said. If we put this in, it's also gonna change some of these tracks and sometimes when people's. Track sizes change from one tax bill to another, they come in and then ask questions and we have to be able to. I have to be able to justify everything I've done, as does Holly need to be able to do that. And so I spoke to her this morning and and the consensus was if the Commission wants us to adjust the parcel fabric, reflect that right-of-way, we'll be happy to do it.
Cause currently, even though your road records show that there's a road record through there. The farmland that it's affecting, they own it. They're all like it's showing up as their ownership.
It it's showing up. It's showing up without the right-of-way in there.
Okay.
And those fields are being farmed.
Yep.
And we're not going in and telling them they have to clear off of it or anything else.
Right.
It's just uh the maps show what the maps show because that's what they've shown for quite a while, but.
I mean.
There are other legal documents that say there is something there.
Okay, but to your point and to get an answer, to me, it sounds like this isn't. A viable option and the fact that if there's roads all over the county that are road records. But they're not enforced right now. Like, we're not just gonna go start taking people's land, right, and putting a road back that. Hasn't been a road. Or like, I guess I just don't understand the process that or. Is the bridge the option? Like, I I guess I just don't know, cause when they were in here, we talked about Grandeur, Seventeenth or the bridge, like what are. Or an easement between parties like. So they're just wanting an update of where where we're at on.
Well, I mean, it sounds to me like they've done the work, we found the the record. That would be a much vi- more viable. Way of going to get them access and that it it's not. If it hasn't been used and they've been, they've been able to use that property. Even though it was in under an easement, I mean, they've gotten the good out of that for all of this time without. I mean, I wouldn't say that it's confiscating or taking anything away from them. They've been able to use that property. Basically free of charge because it would have been under an easement.
So it is under an easement of the township road.
No, it's county road right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way or it's.
Right-of-way is an easement, so so I I don't wanna make it sound like. We don't have anything there. We do have. I mean, there is a record that shows that there is a viable. Right-of-way. If you remember back when we talked about doing road record research, we said. You'll have some cases where there is clear history of a road. You'll have areas where there is no clear history and then you will have some foggy areas in between. This one has a clear history.
Okay.
Okay? But whether or not somebody else can per- can produce something, you know what? We get a lot of people in our office off the streets. And off the farms who come in and say, no, you don't understand and we got a documented this back in our grandpa's. You know, hope chest. And I said, we'll bring it in.
Yeah.
We'll deal with it. But I don't know those things until I know them.
So it's a clear road?
Yes.
Then so at that point, is that a conversation with the township if they're willing to bring it?
The the question for you was adjusting the online map. Because I think that's the first thing that somebody's going to go look at. And if our online map doesn't show a road. I think that's going to cause significant problems. So trying to avoid that, my suggestion was that we fix the map. Go align with the knowledge and or the information that we have, the best information that we have. GIS and the Appraiser's Office doesn't ordinarily make those changes without some. Good reason to do so, either a deed that's filed or a plat that's filed or a survey. Or direction from the Board of County Commissioners. That's what I think he's asking for. His direction from the Board of County Commissioners to change the map. To correct the map to show it has an open road.
And how, what are our maps based on currently?
The best information that we have available to us. I. Uh Roger could probably answer that better about how they were because, you know, thirty years ago, I don't think we had an online map. You know, I don't even know if we had an electronic map, but that, I don't know when that started.
Uh about twelve, thirteen years ago. Maybe fourteen. Uh prior to that, they drew everything back in and they'd all sit down and say. They'd look at descriptions and things and they'd say, well, I think here's where it goes and they draw it in. Okay?
I guess I'm just trying to understand if there's clear definite reason that this is a road, why the board would have to have an action for that, cause we don't action every road. That like you're doing your research, right? And you're, I mean, you were here. The other week saying that the maps have been updated based on all the books and all the information that we pulled and scanned and. And all of the things, so how this one would be any different.
Well, you don't have to say anything. We just won't change it.
So so.
I I I don't know where else to go with this. It's kind of like, I'm just asking you if if you want it to reflect that.
So when we accepted the road classification, we went through all of our roads. And Dana went through all theirs and what we knew of as a road in that particular time was accepted by the County Commission. And while we were doing that. Roger, you I think you had asked a question. Roger said there's gonna be some instances. Where it's gonna be out of the norm when a question comes up about a road. And if I'm understanding this correctly, this is one that hasn't been used for years, but the right-of-way was there. The road isn't actually not been used for several years. So. Roger has came up with their and Pat, there is a right-of-way. This is a road. Do we add this to? Our map, which would make it a county road? Am I? Am I saying this correctly, Pat?
Well, it's not that it would make it a county road. It would show.
That it it's been there.
Yes.
But it would be a township road, correct? It would be Shannon's Road.
It would be a township.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
But this is one of the exceptions to the rule that we've had. You know, there's other people come in. And there's just a fence line. There's never been any right-of-way. And they wanna go back to the every section line. This is different.
And 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 to explain, we've worked with this now, putting these roads in there for at least ten years. And in that ten-year time, we think we've got a pretty good basis for what's being used. Uh one of the things on doing this research, and we do research for lots of people, is it now says on there that. In order for us to put these things on the map, the county will authorize us to do that. That is part of our process is that the county will authorize that. Otherwise, people are just gonna be in our in our office arguing that this should be on there.
Yeah.
And you need to put it on there.
So it's probably a conversation with the township to understand where they stand on it too. I mean, because we. Where they stand on it too, I mean, because we can deem whatever, but if it's not.
Well, then, also, if I may. Then we'd be able to figure out how this is between them and us, how it would be paid for to get it to where.
If we have culverts or anything that we need, so, okay.
Does everybody agree with that?
I read that that this would be the first step and that we should probably go ahead and accept this.
Yeah, I think we should probably visit with the township first. Cause it's their road.
Well, I think when you start that discussion, I think the first thing that most of them are going to do is look at our online map and say, there's no road showing here. How you're telling me this is the road. It seems like we're in a catch point too there, that you you. We'll do whatever you want to do.
I guess I just don't see any harm in bringing it to. The Shannon Township Board and saying, hey, we've identified there's clear knowledge that there's a road here. We need to act on it in order to put the road back here and change the the parcel map. Because we can do all those things, but it. Then it puts it in the township's. Court to make it usable, cause at the end of the day, all we're trying to do.
It doesn't actually.
Well, so these are the things, cause what's the goal here? The goal is to give people access to their property.
Then we have two choices. We're down to two choices. And that's a decision you guys, you as a commission will have to make because it's not a decision that we can make. And we have to look at the cost. For what a bridge would be to get them through. And then also with the township, what it would take to get the road up to where they could get through.
Cause it just feels like we're passing the buck on expense, right, like we either, we're gonna go ahead and vote that we're gonna make this a road, we're changing the parcel map. And then it's a township road, we said so, good luck, then you go to the township to figure out how to access your property.
Well, I I think.
Instead of, we took out a bridge, now they can't access their property, they're asking for a solution. Like it's a.
Well, I think with the information they have on the road, if, this is just my opinion, if you okay that. Then everybody understands that there is right of way there for a road. If if you don't, my opinion only, then people are gonna say, well, there ain't no, there's no road, there's no need for a conversation. That's, that's just my opinion, but if they don't, if they don't put it, they don't put it down as a road, then.
Think that it was alluded to also that I think there was gonna be assistance from the county to get it. Started, I mean, to to kind of go in there and.
But we're gonna, people are gonna have to go and look at this and just see, see what this is gonna.
I think so too.
Entail.
We we have not, to my knowledge, nobody from the county has traversed the entire area of that. It is quite likely that there are situations where people are farming up to and maybe even in the the area of the road. That's the case with a lot of county roads, though, that even though there's a road there, even open roads that.
I I know it's in your district, have you talked to anyone in Sheehan Township about? About it?
No, um. Same, they call you, and I don't know why, um.
Betty sent an email with Joe and Pat and myself on it.
Right, well, but I mean, they haven't, I don't know why they've. Been going there or not, cause I originally I had been included in on some of those emails. Uh, with the Maltz and Schutzbaum. But I haven't heard from them, cause I was kind of waiting to, I think everybody's kind of waiting to see what the results of. And I think that if we moved on it, it would show that there is movement even on that we're willing to do that, so I think if it's just. If we just. Gonna rely on trying to put in a bridge that, A, we can't afford, it's not, I mean, it would be. Overbilling.
And I just think we're missing a step and like, we need to talk to them to know. Like it's gonna be the.
But even if we, if we approve that, I mean, then it's there, we don't. That it's not obligating us to anything.
There there is a statute that provides where there is a road that that is open, that is where you've got an order from the Board of County Commissioners opening a road. But that it has not been used for, I think it's twenty five years. Um, that the township is not under our responsibility to bring it up to standards until the adjoining landowners. Bring it, they're not required to maintain it until the adjoining landowners bring it up to standard. And so. That wouldn't be the expense of the county or the township to bring it up to standard, it would be the expense of the adjoining landowners. To bring, to bring the road into compliance before it would be maintained by the township.
Well, I think I just.
See the situation where it's quite likely that some of the owners say, I don't need that road, I don't want that road, I'm not going to contribute to that. Um, and if you're going to end up with a situation where legally we've complied with everything we're required to do, but you still have not given. But but there are still landowners that don't have clear access to their property.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I I. So I think that's the likely outcome here.
I would think that we. I I would think that the county would. Uh, be able to use. Some of our equipment and and things to get that up. To. Uh, to assist the township with that, plus there will be some culverts and things that will be ours, there will, it won't.
Without looking, I have no idea.
I'm I'm sure, I mean, I'm just. There, we don't, we don't have a mile of road in our in our county that don't have a culvert somewhere that's not ours, so. You have to assume that there would be some expense to the county, but versus building a bridge. Over that creek, which would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, I mean, the. It's it, to me, it's the only viable option we have to to getting. Anyone access.
I think Roger has something.
Well. That the low water crossing was a half a million dollars. If you went with a bridge, I'm sure you're looking at twice.
And that was, what, seven, eight years ago?
Keep in mind, one other thing I want to bring to your attention. Is that chunk of Rollins Road did not have any right of way shown on it for a long time. It only became, it, just like what we were talking about here, it was just put back on the map. In like two thousand eleven. Or thirteen, somewhere right in there. That was right about the time, uh, Mr. Maltz was buying that property. That the appraiser had to put back on, that, it was before my time. Uh, so I would think it was probably about two thousand eleven. Okay, so again, the thing of these going and coming from the map is not a, is not totally new. On the other hand, what we have done at this point is we've done the research. And there isn't much else I can do at this point, unless you say, adjust the map, and so that's, and and I. Um, apologize if I was defensive about that, it should, I don't know where else to go at this.
No, I think this is good, I think we learned a lot of new information today of where things stand and what it is, I do think. It's worth having a conversation with the township to let them know, like, we found this. So to your point on easements. If the township is willing to create the the road, right? Do the landowners hang that up? Like, I'm not saying a full blown gravelled road, just a path for people to get there and get out, right? To access their property, if the township is willing to do that. Do they still need easement signed off on from the landowners?
No.
Okay. So it's really just. We're trying to find a solution, and if the township's willing to help make a path and we have any obligations on culverts. That's what we just need to determine, I just don't want to sign on to something without knowing the cost yet and and having that conversation.
Well, I think that, you know, this is part of finding the solution of this, since here's. You know, we saw today, I don't remember what the lowest bid was, seven thirty one, same creek, this is in a wider spot. With probably a lot more rock, so you are close to probably a million dollars for the bridge in there. Uh, and I think everybody here. Wants the people to be able to get to their properties, have access, it's just finding a way that we can afford it. And get them what they need.
And have everybody work together to find the solution that's part of it.
And I think that's what what we're doing here, is Roger's done everything he can to this point. And here we sit, now we've got to make a decision, you know, uh, how we want to move forward.
I think I would be ready to probably make that decision next week.
Next week.
I mean, I just, I just want to talk to the township and let them know, I mean, I feel like it's courtesy, it's common courtesy to tell them the situation. And, you know, they can come look at what you have if they need to, but it's a clear road. And it's an option, but also. We want to know our costs, so if you know anything, the county's obligated to, cause we're at a place where we don't even have enough. Resources to take care of what we have, so signing up additional, right, is more, we gotta have all those pieces, so we know. We take this action and this is what we are now.
I would like to, I would like to walk the old right of way and just see what is there. Just see. See what's back there, see what this, you know, we can take a video or we can video. What it is, so everybody can actually see. See what is what we're up against, you know, and I know Tyler had made a comment, and I don't want to speak for him, that there was. A gas line that went through there, I believe. And then there was a couple of big ditches, we need to, we need to see those, because when we go and talk to the township, or maybe we need to go with the township. And we walk the road at the same time and we video it, and then we can have a conversation with them at that point.
If I'm available, I would, I would go with you.
But I, you know, and I don't know, you know, when we start walking from one end, if somebody's gonna be upset, they think we're on their property, but.
We've got clear.
Right, but I mean, that's just something I think that we need to, as the county and the township probably walk it. Look at it and we can have a discussion afterwards. Uh, I think somebody needs to talk to them other than me before this. I think it would be best if it comes from a commissioner that I can set up the meeting, but I think it would be, it would come off a lot better if a commissioner.
You have their number, cause I can give you, but all of their numbers.
I probably do, but.
Make a note, and when we're done, I'll give you all their, so you can, you you can be the lead on that, and then if for something happened, you can't make it. I would look, I mean, I would step in in your place, but I would love you to be that person and then just bring back the info and. As long as everybody's on the same page and has a conversation, it's gonna be. Good, so, and appreciate the information of knowing where the road stands.
And then, uh, I need to go, I hate to get out of here, I need to go talk to Schwabe. And I think Roger, did you want?
Yeah, I got a lot on your agenda for fifteen minutes to go.
I'm sorry.
That could take a few minutes. Here's what I have. Uh, I, and I'm gonna tell you, we have changed that one, it's not the exact same copy, it's got markings on it. What what has occurred and. And if I'm out of my lane and you say go away, I'll be more than happy to do that. But I'm usually the guy who reviews, uh, surveys and talks to people about what they have to do to get their changes made. Um, I got, uh, some time ago, I started dealing with. Uh, Sarah Bay or County Surveyor about this, and what we know is that there are a number of cases which have been done. Which involve boundary adjustments of tracks, where two landowners are adjusting boundaries. Uh, oftentimes when that happens. Uh, there's a survey done, there are two new descriptions created, and then they never bothered to do documents. To change what the properties are. And so they then end up owning the same thing, we've got this case right now in Heritage Hills. Where there is a boundary adjustment done, and when they transfer the properties. They transfer the properties based on the original descriptions, thinking the boundary adjustment changed the descriptions, and it does not legally change any of those descriptions. So what I have to do is go to the title company and say, you've insured these, you've got houses on other people's properties, what do you want to do with it? And then they will go, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, we will get this fixed, how do we keep this from happening in the future? And so our discussion centers around boundary adjustment plaits. Which actually change those addresses. Have the owner sign the document that shows that the survey was done, the difference between a survey and a plat is, the owner does not sign a sur- sign a survey. The owner signs a plat which says they acknowledge that these changes are being made on their behalf. In this case, Gunderson and Cargill want to, they're doing. A sale of one of the properties from one to the other, and they're wanting to adjust the boundaries between the two properties. By the time they finished writing these two new descriptions, they would be so complicated. That the next attorney who puts them on a document will put the wrong, the wrong one on there, we know this. It always happens, sorry for your profession, Pat, but it happens constantly. Uh, and I'm not talking once or twice a year, I'm talking every month. Uh, in this case, what we did is we said, let's do an adjustment plat. Which basically does a boundary line adjustment, and on yours it says Cargill Gunderson Boundary Line Adjustment Plat. Uh, and then it creates track parcel one and parcel two. Those parcels then. This plat sets it out, so that when they're transferred in the future, they don't have to put in that convoluted meet and bounce description, they can just say. Parcel two of the Gunderson Cargill Adjustment Survey Plan, okay? Um, however, in doing that. I just do not have you in the middle of it, but after talking to Pat, anytime there is a subdivision done. Uh, or a flat done outside the city limits. Uh, statute nineteen twenty six thirty three says in there that it must be approved and contain a signature of the Board of County Commission. Fair statement, I'd contact him. A week ago about this, and so what I have to do is I had to get, I have to get you all to approve it so that one of you can sign on their behalf. On this plat, you don't have, I'm I'm having you just review it today, the actual signature will come down later. Because what they don't want to do is, they don't want to get all the signatures on these things, until everyone's taken a look at it and said, okay. So the surveyors have reviewed it, Sarah has reviewed it. We have reviewed it, we've made changes, and that's why mine doesn't have the same title as yours, mine has Atchison misspelled on it. It has a number of differences on it, okay, but it should now all be corrected and worked. Uh, and so if you would see fit to approve this so that the chairman can sign this. Then once all the other signatures are done, you would sign it last on its way in to be registered. And then this would become a plat of those two properties. This is not new. Uh, we did the same thing with the YMCA, because the YMCA, when it was, uh, recently improved, was broken into four chunks. And each of those chunks had the same thing done, and the owner had to sign on behalf. Acknowledging this, and it, and then it actually becomes a plat of the property, it does a legal division of the property rather than just creating a description. Okay? Have I explained that? Well.
So by the statute, we have to approve any plat? That's happening in the county, is that correct, plat map?
Has to be approved by you before it's recorded.
Okay, which is what we did historically on that two acre plat that came to us and said, hey, this is a plat. Here's the map, we need you to say that. Because.
And the the it's it's usually the requirements in there because you're responsible for the public dedication of land. That is frequently included in, and there is no public dedication of land included in this plat.
Okay.
So really, the the reason why you're included doesn't make any sense, but the statute doesn't have an exception for that.
Okay, thank you, cause that was, yeah, I wasn't.
And we discussed that at length.
Between those two and.
And and we just said, rather than all the other things, it's easier just to bring it to you and say, would you approve of these, of this boundary change?
On their behalf.
On their behalf. They're both gonna sign it approving.
And we'll be the last two, like, they sign it, give it to us.
Your signature will, they'll come in here and one of you can sign it before it goes to be recorded, or we can just have them.
The county surveyor probably signs it after you.
Okay. But she's already reviewed it, approved it, and spoken to me about it. And it's been changed for her behalf also. Uh, but it just says in here that the county commission, now. If it's inside the city limits, then you don't have to do that, and so if it's in Eppingham or in.
But then the YMCA, you mentioned that we did.
Well, the city did.
Okay.
But but it's, it was a boundary adjustment plat. And it was done much like this. Uh, it will stop problems from recurring, just like we had with the, uh. You know, with Heritage Hills, because honestly, we have houses on the wrong part. Because honestly, we have houses on the wrong parcels and now instead of having one owner to deal with, we have four. So, and those are awkward things and when you're selling properties and building properties, you don't need those extra problems.
Okay.
Thank you for them, okay.
So.
I need a motion to approve.
Oh, I thought you were bringing it back, you said.
I'll bring it back for signature, I want your approval on it now.
Oh, okay, I, I, I misunderstood that, yeah.
Okay, sorry, we thought we were.
Yeah, you just don't need to sign it today, but I need an approval on it and the approval date will be this date and we'll just make sure.
Want the owner's signatures before we approve it?
That's what I'm saying is, I want you to approve it before they take it and get it all signed.
I have no problem with that.
All you're doing is proving what you've got in front of you. The owners will sign.
Doing, but wouldn't we want the owners to sign off that they agree before that we.
Here's the problem we had once before when we did this.
Okay.
Is we got everybody to sign it, then it came back and somebody. And, and, and I'm not even saying it was one of you, I don't remember exactly when it was, but said, can we get this changed? And then it is a mess to go back and get all the signatures, all the notarizations and all the other things done all over again, so. That's why what we've done is we've gone through all of those things already, but, uh, and, and honestly. I don't need to be in the middle of this process. This is just, your city, your county planner should be doing this.
So is it okay to make a motion contingent on owner approval?
Sure.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the Gunderson Cargill Boundary Line Adjustment Plat. Um, contingent on owner approval, do I have a motion to approve?
I approve.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero, so is this the?
That is what it will be, they're just gonna get the signature and come back with it.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you've got some other stuff to go before.
We need to go now.
I would like to do my recommendation on the bridge, it just take about five minutes, pretty good with that, Roger, have you got more?
Yeah, no, I just had like four more things, I just wanted to bring up to the. Is it okay to do that? Uh, and we've discussed several of them, um. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is that we are doing a, uh. Jack is now doing every morning. He is doing all of the new deeds that come in from the Register of Deeds, this was one of the ways that we're trying to help out. Uh, both Michelle and Holly in their work is, it, oftentimes you have. New employees who are stuck there trying to read legal descriptions that are pretty complicated, just like this kinda stuff coming in. And because of that, Jack has been reading a lot of these and so every morning he's getting all those new deeds, he's reading them. And he's determining if it's a straight transfer. Uh, whether it's a split or whether it's a combine or whether it's a correction of something else that's already done. And how those deeds fit into the process, he's filling out a spreadsheet on them and then he's making that spreadsheet available to both Michelle and to. Uh, Belinda and Holly. And so, just so that you know, that's one more thing that we're trying to do to keep both of them on the same page and make it easier for them to do their job.
Excellent.
And I hope that is helpful to you.
Yes, it is, it is, it, it's, it's, he started it in July, so it will be very helpful once we start hitting more of those. Yes.
Another thing I wanna bring to your attention very briefly and that is, we get a lot of people come in and. And because we do a lot of these things, uh, we get a lot of people who want us to do title work for them. Uh, they want us to write descriptions, find things, locate old stuff. Uh, you know what, we, we do road research. And we read deeds and stuff, uh, but, uh, every once in a while we have to say, you're out of our workplace. And so when we do that, be aware, people may come to you and complain about things. Now, I'm working very hard to make sure that when we tell people we can't do those things for them, that we're trying to be as kind as possible and say. That just isn't our job to do. As a matter of fact, if you look at the Register of Deeds, it says that they're, that they process documents, that they don't. Do research, uh, and the, and the same thing, we get people in the door and then we have to say. Uh, you know, let's see what we can find on this, but, uh, I've long said. Title companies have their job, we don't wanna do the title work. On the other hand, uh. When the title company has a problem, they do come to us and we do discuss it and try and get them where they need to be, okay? Uh, the next item.
So when we can't help them, we're giving them like their contact over there and sending them over to someone who can help them, just.
Yeah.
They know where to go, cuz a lot of times.
Wanna pay anything and they don't wanna end up going anywhere and so.
I was gonna say, a lot of times people don't know where to go next, right?
Yes, we will fully recommend a title company. Um, the new aerial photos are in, uh, just this morning, Mark showed me that we've already paid for them. I gave Michelle a, an email from the city saying that we, that they would pay seven thousand dollars of that expense. And so they're going to bill them for it. We may have one more little thing that we need. Uh, they gave us all JPG files, there are literally. Hundreds, if not a thousand of them, and, uh, we're trying to combine them now. And see if we can do a, a mosaic data set. Um, it's been running for over a day and computer's not finished yet, but sometimes it takes two or three days to run something. Uh, on a computer, uh, to get it to finish the process. Uh, if not, what we will do is we will try and get them to make us a, a, what's called a Mr. Sid file, it's a multi-resolution. Map database, okay? Simulated map database and what it does is it just takes this bundle of a thousand aerial photos and wraps them down into one aerial photo that's. This big instead of this big, which means that your computer processing processes more quickly. And it makes it easier for people to get it up and view it, whether it's online or, or out here, so you may still see that coming through. Uh, you don't need to make a decision on it now, but I would probably look at, um, seeing how we can, you know, five hundred bucks. To get that done and, and the software to do it would be way more expensive than that. It's not that we do this very often, so it's not something we, we even want to have. Um, other than that, that's it, thank you very much.
On the bridge, two ninety. Bids that we just opened, uh, our engineers, while we've eaten has looked them over. Uh, all bidders have acknowledged the addendum have bonds along with the form and that all contractors are very good contractors. And I am going to recommend that we go with Ebert Construction with a low bid at seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. If you'd like me to read the other two while I'm here, I can, if not.
And if you just wanna summarize, so it's all together in the meeting, that'd be fine.
Uh, Don Linger and Sons bid was two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred eighty-four, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seventy cents, King's Construction was. One million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four dollars and twenty cents. And this on three fourteenth, going back to the Indian Hood, if anyone's listening and, uh, that bridge is in bad native replacement. And this is, this is the bridge that we're gonna replace it with.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to, uh, approve Ebert Construction out of Wamigo. Uh, with estimated start date of September first of twenty twenty-five and the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. As presented from our Run Bridge Superintendent, vote motion.
So moved.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I need a rest, break, yes, Mark's.
What's that?
Mark. On the agenda.
Are the agendas posted anywhere ahead of time?
Yes, county website.
I just wanted to work it and find it.
Um, can I come back there?
It's on her, uh, Facebook.
We'll be ready for you, Mark, oh, okay. I'm gonna take this opportunity, okay? He's the first.
Oh, yeah, well, they're, they have been, cuz I don't put them on until the weekend, I tried to get them on by Friday, but. So we try to put everything on there, um, sometimes they're not like the days, so. Purchase, purchase orders and stuff aren't typically on there, but they have them here, so. Okay, ready, thanks.
Appreciate that.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. Your name's all over the place, but I didn't ever, I didn't put a face back with me.
Mm-hmm, yes. So you ran, did you run for precinct person today or thi- this year?
Yeah, yes, I'm one of the, in the district one.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
I always forget which one I'm in, I think I'm in West Third, but. It's whatever, I'm Tim Becker's, I'm just looking at, but that has not been updated yet. Uh, they don't even have twenty twenty-three's on there.
Really?
Yeah, at least when I looked.
Uh-huh.
So I was looking to see if I was on there.
I gave it, I gave it to, to Derek, I always give them to him, so.
Who's supposed to update the website?
Different departments do, so, I will go in, I will go in and look, but I thought I changed them, but I'll go look for it.
Well, you might find it, since I obviously couldn't find them in it. Or the agenda, I should say.
Alright, Mark, you ready for us?
Um, yeah.
Or, you need a second for me?
Just got, um, an invoice. From Jack and email that I was waiting on, so printing out the purchase order right now.
Thank you. Did you, so, did you sign these?
I haven't.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I have topic.
I know, one thing after another. Okay, so we're gonna have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director with the Senior Village Pass Through. Uh, Fund Purchase Order Approval and ARPA General Entry Approval for IT. An ARPA Update Discussion and Pepperie Classification of Expenses Discussion. Senior Village Fund Transfer Due to Negative Balance, um, to clean up for the audit and then, um, we will be having, um. A discussion of, with the Finance Director on the finances, so.
Okay, thank you, um, so. I actually have two purchase orders, um, for the, the money that we received, uh, payable to. Passes on Senior Village, um, this first one, uh, was actually. Money we received, um, the EMS claimed accidentally, so I had to do a journal entry to take it away from EMS. And give it to the Senior Village Pass Through Fund so that I could do a purchase order to pay it out of Pass Through Fund. It's one thousand, one twenty-eight fifty-four.
Alright, I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Finance Director. Out of the Senior Village Pass Through Fund to Atchison Senior Village in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. For the twenty twenty-four fourteen to pay out, Senior Village monies received from inside that was after the sale date of services.
So moved.
Okay, I will second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Um, I have another one, um, this is the fifteenth one, uh, that we've done so far this year. Uh, this one was all the same, the same thing, except a little different, this one was found. From May twenty-third of this year. Uh, that we had collected it by accident, we didn't know that it was, we thought it was ours, but it was actually Senior Villages. Um, so I, I moved it again to be able to pay out.
So like that, was that, were you approached by Senior Village and?
Yeah, and they provide, um, in some of those, there's a, a remit on the back of them that show. The resident and the dates of service, so that's clear that it's not ours because it was after February twenty.
I was just wondering, you know, like something in May, you know, how that becomes found, you know, it's like, I was just curious on the process.
I think they're getting caught up with their billing as well, I think there was a transition period, kind of like what we had. Where when they took over, it took time to get things collected and, and now they're finding things and. We got that in May and they're just now noticing that, oh, you know, they don't have that. Hey, so.
So I'd look for a motion to approve, um, this purchase order as presented by our Finance Director out of the Pass Through Fund to Atchison Senior Village. For money is received after the sale date in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
I will second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, this, um, third thing that I have. Is a, um, journal entry to approve ARPA dollars to reimburse the IT budget. For our CIC Peopleware Agreement. Um, there was a journal entry we made previously where we were told. Um, that we could not, ARPA could not fund. Um, a converged one invoice because it was, the maintenance agreement was after the terms. After the year of twenty-six that ARPA was allowable for. So we made a journal entry to give that back to ARPA. And that the IT budget would cover that maintenance period cost, the total is twenty-three thousand, six fifty-four oh six. So, um, instead of reworking how the ARPA dollars are, I found an allowable expense. Um, it's the CIC, um, software renewal that we paid for in twenty-four. Um, this is allowable because it is only encompassing twenty twenty-four, not anything in the future beyond that. So I have this purchase order to kind of swap out that same number of twenty-three thousand, six fifty-four oh six. Uh, to pay for that out of the IT budget, so basically it's a wash.
So this purchase order is just taking place, um, in lieu of the one that had the subscription that. Went beyond the date allowed, so, okay, I would look for a motion to, uh, approve this Atchison County Journal Entry Transfer as presented by our Finance Director.
So moved.
Okay, I will second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the fourth item I have is another journal entry. Uh, to move money from the sale of Senior Village Fund, one ninety-seven. To cover the negative Senior Village Fund two hundred. That Fund two hundred was the operating fund for Senior Village. Um, it has been negatives, uh, per our twenty twenty-three audit, they recommended that we, uh. Shore that up, um, and make it zero, uh, so I have a journal entry to move it from. This Proceeds Fund to Senior Village, it's a hundred and ninety-eight thousand to eighteen twenty. After doing that, that would leave, um, the Proceed Fund at one million, three hundred thousand. Seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. We don't have to take it from this fund, we just would have to find a, another fund to take it from.
And those negatives were accrued from expenses after the sale as far as.
Um, like the. Not, no, not necessarily, um, they were from twenty-three as well.
Gotcha.
From expenses. Not enough revenue.
I would look for a motion to approve the Atchison County Transfer Journal Entry as presented by our Finance Director to shore up the. Uh, Senior Village Fund, and once that's brought down to zero, it will.
It'll go away.
Go away, perfect, okay.
So moved.
Alright, moved, I will second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to you zero.
Okay. Um, the fifth thing I've got is. Um, it goes with the ARPA update. There's a, a couple forecasted expenditures, one of which is this purchase order. Um, to secure us technology. It is the second and last payment to um, that company for the door and intercom control security panel at the jail. It's for eighty nine thousand five hundred and seventy. Um, the invoices is back here, just got it a, a few minutes ago. Um, so we can get that paid. After this, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar forecasted expense for land acquisition. Um, and then some other money that Joe was gonna. Um, Roden Bridge was gonna use. Um, but we were gonna kind of hold off on that till we figured some other things out, so.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve this purchase order um, out of ARPA to secure toss technology um, in the amount of eighty nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. For the second half and final payment um, for the jail door and intercom control.
So move.
Okay, then moved. I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to the zero.
That's all I have for those things. If you have any other questions.
Um, so next on the list was Financial Workshop. Is that something you want to do in workshop or?
It's basically gonna be the same things that I talked to you about this morning, so it's up to you if you want to.
I don't think there's a need for workshop, do you?
No. I don't know. Is, is, is more discussion necessary? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, you guys need.
Just something to do now.
So.
Today? Or I'm just, that's.
I mean, I don't necessarily know if it needs to be today. By the time I'm here, the next time on the third. Will be pretty close to. Running out.
Well, the only reason I'm, I'm not is because we have one commissioner account and that's all.
That doesn't change his situation or where we are.
No.
That's true.
So. The scenario is we're short on cash, so we use, we don't do the purchase of the land with ARPA as originally intended. That amount of ARPA would go into the budget to sustain us from being negative on cash.
Partially.
And then.
Not a hundred percent.
That doesn't even.
It'll help. So I'm projecting about two hundred and twenty two thousand negative after payrolls are.
And that would be two hundred and fifty.
And that's two fifty, but that doesn't, you would need extra to fund accounts payable. Whatever happens between now and the end of the year.
And that's within everyone's budget.
Just the general fund.
Yeah. And then.
There could be more revenue that comes in from EMS. I don't know what that will be. There is gonna be revenue from the bank interest. Between those things, maybe ninety thousand, a hundred thousand.
So, but your recommendation to us was utilizing that two fifty to help close the gap. And then if we still want to move forward on the land.
You can do so from another fund.
From the Senior Village Proceeds. And our reserves currently are at.
We will, should, we should take into account what we've already said would be out there for the budget. For twenty twenty five, so I'll give you that number with that out of there. Once you use the cash to supplement the twenty twenty five budget, you'll have three hundred and forty thousand eight hundred dollars.
Step figure again.
Three hundred and forty thousand eight hundred.
So.
I mean, we can monitor this as a week by week basis, of course, and, and, and.
Because worst case, you're gonna get to your deadline and need that money.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my concern is. We're short and it's twenty twenty four. We haven't collected what we.
Anticipated.
Anticipated, and we've cut everything so much for twenty twenty five.
Mm hmm. There is nothing built into the budget for any.
Issue like this.
No, you, you don't bank on ad glorm taxes not being paid. There is nothing, there's no other contingency unless you have a savings backup plan. You don't get to just in the budget plug in, well, there's gonna be a shortfall of two hundred thousand people, dollars of people not paying. Well, if you plug that in, then that just increases taxes more, you know.
Yep.
For the shortfall.
Yep.
So the only thing, I mean, your revenues equal your budget expenses. So you can expense all day long, but you have to have the revenue there to cover the budget expenses.
Do you have any kind of report that would show where that lost money is not being paid from or if that's?
Yeah.
Like, I mean.
Yeah.
That would be kind of interesting to see what, uh, then that maybe would give us an idea if that's something that's still outstanding, that's very collectible or not likely. Something changed. I think that would give us a big heads up. Thank you.
And also on, so on our budgets, um, year to date, if we have. Departments that haven't spent everything and maybe the needs aren't. Critical for year end, right, that they could utilize that. Um, is that the same, Patrick, for elected and appointed? As far as if we're looking at year to date budgets. It doesn't matter that we've given budget authority to an elected if we needed. That, if we needed to slow spending in these last couple months because we haven't collected the revenue anticipated. Do we have authority as the board to, to freeze that?
Yeah. I, I think you do. I'm sure the statutes and the Attorney General's opinions would say that you're supposed to have a dialogue with the elected official to. See if you can reach consensus and sing kumbaya and get everybody on the same page, but ultimately you're responsible for the expenditures if they can.
Going back to your point of monitoring it closely in case by case, to Eric's point of what we're missing in revenues would be important, but also like where we're at year to date. If there's anyone, because that would help, because right now you're saying we could cover the payroll, but we don't know what the AP will be.
Mm hmm.
Well, if we can control the AP and explain the situation, right, then we prevent that from happening. Feel like that's a good plan.
Yeah. It's a good plan.
I don't know. What do you think?
Yeah. I think anything, just. A little bit, you know, the trajectory, you know, you could alter it a little bit. I think it would make a, a big difference. Final. Numbers.
So I guess then a conversation of the land.
And I only bring that up is because it wasn't, it wasn't truly approved through ARPA yet. I mean, you guys discussed it to move forward, yes, but you haven't really approved it or closed on it. Um, so it was just up for grabs and sitting through here, I don't know if there's really a plan. That the board has for the land of this year, this is happening, this is happening. So if there's no plan. I think it seems, knowing that we're in a, a cash i- issue, it seems a little. Hard for the horse type of thing.
I think pretty.
I don't want to put that damper on, on you guys, but then sooner I can get you this information and really let you know where we're at is better.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Well, we're not, we're not ready for signatures anymore, so I mean, if it's, you know, it's not like, I don't think we're gonna be holding them off. Like, we want it, we want it, then no, I think it's.
Just understanding what and where.
We're, I mean, this is kind of a. Slow walk, I guess.
Okay, so.
So do you um. Think I should send a department head email to everyone explaining the AP?
Yeah.
Thing and.
Yes.
If they want to have a meeting, we can definitely do that.
Mm hmm.
And.
And have you, have, are you able to pull a general uh, fund report to see overall year to date um, where we're at and if we don't. If the spending halts, would we be in an okay position? Or is it too late?
No, um, I think we can get done what you're wanting, maybe. Not in so much fashion, but I think we can get the same.
Understood.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just thinking if we're looking, what'd you say, three forty or something?
Three forty eight hundred.
Uh, yeah, three forty eight hundred.
So. If it, I'm just saying if we looked at a year to date and we had six hundred left. To have those conversations with the people that maybe we can. So let's talk about the situation overall, though. How did we get here? I mean, I know we got here because we did, we forecasted more revenue than what we've actually collected.
Right.
And we know that we have had some department changes and some lulls and collecting on certain areas, but. Outside of that, I mean, nothing outside of the norm of. What we should be thinking of doing differently, I guess. That's, because when you're faced with a hard situation, you want to be like, okay, how did we get here? How do we not get here again? You know, those things without over collecting either, so um, just kind of. Thinking through that and curious and following up on collectibles, what those numbers look like.
Yeah, I, I think I'd have to run the revenue reports, compare that against what we said we were gonna get.
Okay.
Now.
And that goes back to Eric's question of kind of.
Yeah.
Recapping where we're missing and, and then also if they know, if our departments know the urgency. You know, of where we stand as a whole, then maybe the collectibles could be in, yeah.
Right.
So it really doesn't matter. If they come in late and say that we've had those expenditures late from EMS. But then they come in in February, does that uh, change anything? Is it, it's not, is it the calendar year or is it with the date of their billing?
It depends on how it's entered. Um, you can, like, if you get the invoice in February, you can pay it in February and it affects twenty five. Budget twenty five catch.
Mm hmm.
But like, if you get the invoice in February and you want to use your remainder twenty four budget, you can do that. It just hits the twenty four budget. But twenty five catch, so you're, you're kind of taking away from the cash in twenty five regardless. It's just. If you hit twenty four budget, then, then what about twenty five's budget? Are you gonna need that twenty five catch for twenty five budget?
Right. I just, I didn't know how, if there was like a cutoff that, you know, then it's like, well, after. At certain point, because the audit and stuff would come in and then they have to have a final figure, but I'm just kind of curious how that worked.
Yeah, um, last year we let it go for. A month, which definitely could be part of the issue as well. If there was period thirteen that happened in twenty twenty three. That was using twenty four's cash for twenty three bills.
Hmm.
So you, you, we may have to go back and look at twenty three to see how much was period thirteen, because that would eat away from the cash in twenty four.
Mm hmm. Might be able to run it up quickly.
Well, it's, it's not as much, but it was a hundred thousand, period thirteen. So we used a hundred thousand dollars of twenty five's cash. Twenty four's cash for twenty three bills.
Is that unusual or?
No.
Okay.
Um, but you just, you, you, you'd have to like run the, like how I kind of showed you this chart earlier, you'd have to. And I, I mean, I'm learning all this more and more too, but you'd have to make sure that the actual, actual collected is above what we budgeted to collect. Um, depending on how much you want to spend out of that to know. How much you can spend from the future year for the back budget year. If that makes sense, probably not.
And remind me when we go through those processes in the revenues, I know solid waste share, the jail and EMS all have their revenue worksheets too. They setting those projections? Okay, so that would also be good for us to see projected versus ac- actual and then making sure that we stay on top of what that looks like.
Yeah, the um, another thing where this could get a little more tricky is the sheriff in jail. Because some of those revenues are federal inmate dollars, so that is supposed to go and offset the jail, the jail expenses. So when you move revenue, the offset expenses, you reduce cash as well.
Hmm.
Um, because you're, you're taking it away from what you received and you're giving yourself more budget credit.
But then that helps ad glorm because you have revenue to offset the expenses when you're budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, when you're, yeah, absolutely.
Wish we had the state's problem. I think I seen that they were gonna have one point four billion dollars in overruns in twenty five with more.
Wow.
Actually took in four hundred and fourteen million less than last year.
Hmm.
Because I think the sales tax, they took off the food. It was a big one.
Okay. So, no, you're fine. So the plan is you're going to give us more information uh, of kind of where we stand and then we can. Roundtable this again next week when Commissioner Revis is with us.
I will be here with you next week.
Oh, yeah. So the third is what we said. Yeah. So on the third we'll have, which actually by then a couple of weeks, I mean, then you might know more even of where we.
Yeah, because there'll be a, a payroll out of there on the twenty second.
Okay. All right, so we can just put financial uh, recap on our December third agenda.
Um, this also goes back to any, any tax loving fund um, that this can happen, and it has happened um, with. The Extension Council as well. It will be negative six thousand dollars. Because, you know, every peo- every ad glorm tax that's not collected in the general affects all the other tax loving funds. So Extension Council will be short six thousand.
And all the other entities?
All the other entities unless they have.
So.
Excess cash.
Do we notify them of that?
It won't be like um. Um. No, they should have their own way to track how much they receive. Like, are you talking townships and all that?
All of them.
They should have their own way of knowing. Bonnie sends the, the stubs to them to know how much taxes through the distribution will be given to them.
Okay.
They should all, they should take those numbers just like what I do.
It's the same thing. They projected this, they're only getting this.
Yeah.
And it's the same.
Um, it's a little bit more tricky with those because like in the county, it's everyone funnels into one budget, but. The townships, not everyone in the county pays that one township or that one school district. Um, like four oh nine, only people in those four oh nine districts pay that, and three seventy seven only pay that one. So I wouldn't know who didn't pay to know which ones would be affected.
Got it.
So that would be more tricky. That's why they get the stubs to know how much was can uh, come in and being distributed.
And I have a, a note on December third that Alan will be going there, maybe also, so. I don't know, I. I just penciled it. I don't remember.
Well, maybe, so even though Mark's gone next week, we can give him a.
Yeah.
A, up to date, like an update and. So even though Mark's gone next week, we can give him a a up to date, like an update and then.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, it is what it is, like we just.
But I think we need to apprise him next week of what's going on.
Yeah, hundred percent.
And if he's in, Mark, you might talk with him or if you, yeah, give him an email and.
Yeah, if you just CC commissioners on that email, maybe when you're gonna send it to department heads of the snapshot, then we all will.
Yeah.
Have the the info would be good. Anything else for us, Mark?
I don't think so.
Any unfinished business that you had?
I don't, was we gonna?
Yeah, we'll have another executive. County counselor updates.
I don't have anything for today.
Thanks, um, so yes, we will have um executive session. Um, HR. County counselor.
Finance.
Finance.
Commissioners.
Uh, not elected, forty-five minutes.
We're ready for that.
Uh, sure.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at twelve sixteen. PM uh to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in forty-five minutes. In the commission room of the courthouse basement and as present will be three commissioners, uh, HR. Finance Director and County Council.
Okay, I will second, and moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in open session and I think we're have an extension.
I'm gonna make a motion that we extend the previous uh executive session for thirty more minutes.
I will second that, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, all right. Time to look through, did we have, uh. I know it's been a couple of weeks since I've been here, so I apologize if you guys covered this last week, but. Do we have a date for the sports complex ball field update? Okay, have we reached out to them yet?
Did you reach out to anybody?
Can you reach out to them and get them on the agenda?
Do with them all up here?
Um, yeah, I think we just talked about getting him on the agenda for an overall update of.
Both F and M and.
Yeah, of knowing updates and then knowing when we're gonna sunset and how much cash is there.
It's kind of a, both ways, I mean, we wanna know what they've got to do yet and then they should know where.
Same kinds, separate kinds.
Same, I mean, they could.
Same if they can, I think, cause a lot of it would be duplicate information.
Um, and then Pat County Lake, um, we had sent out a request for information or. And have you had a chance to circle back with any of the people with questions or?
I got, uh, I have some contact from one of the groups, Shay Haddock, I don't remember what the name of the company is, but. It seemed like I had seen something.
Yeah, I think they sent us an email.
Yeah.
Which we don't respond to usually, so I didn't know if you had a chance to respond to it, I didn't see. Trying to remember. Drew, is that right? Yeah, on November eight, had sent us an email.
Yes, I. I don't remember, we put a. I don't think we put a specific deadline for responses. How many responses have you had? That's the only one.
Really?
Um, that I've received. And. Uh, I had a phone conversation with with him.
Oh, you did?
It might, but it, yeah, I had a phone conversation with him, but uh, but that's it and. Yeah, and I, there were opposing that came, so if we wanna reach out again and ask for some written response. If they're interested to give us a, to give a deadline, we could sure do that.
I think we should do that.
So we wanna maybe put it for the end of the year as the deadline or. Uh, is that too far out?
No, I don't think so with the holidays and times and queen.
Plus, we've only got one, I mean, if we had multiples, you know, it would be one thing, but since we've only got one.
Well, and I know that I had a phone call from someone that had heard someone else got it. And that's why I'd ask you who you sent it to, but every, I think they went to their spam folders. So if you send out another one, that would be good to tell them like, hey, following up, here's an email or here's a deadline.
Was it one of the people that was on the list?
Yes. But one of the people not on the list is who told them, so I was just confused of who was on the list and who we sent it to.
I think there was one of those emails that I, I had a typo in it, but when we got the bounce notification. Figured out what the error was and got it sent, so.
Gotcha. Um, I also had a question um on transient guest tax collected by the county. What it, so I know, right? I looked up, there was like a charter resolution from two thousand four. But I didn't know, are we collecting transient? We are, okay.
Connie gets it from the state.
Connie gets it from the state and that's from.
Hotel tax.
Okay, so she gets it for everyone in Ashes. And then do we have any transient guest tax that's generated outside of the city?
Yes, if there's like um Airbnb's or or BRBOs or hotel accommodation things.
And then what do we do with that? Does it?
It goes into a transient guest tax fund that's also distributed.
Okay, that's distributed to.
I don't know.
That's okay.
No percent.
I was just trying to, I was reading this um. Hard resolution and trying to understand it and I'm like, you know what, I'm better off just.
I don't, I've never seen that.
Yeah, it's from two thousand four.
Yeah, please, please, I I don't have a copy of it, I'm not.
Yep.
It seems like I've seen, seen it like the receipts, but I've never seen the resolution or any of that, I. The documentation.
Sorry, and it came from. You'll see my personal email, just because somebody, I didn't have anything on me when they asked the question and I. When people ask me, I'll send myself a quick email so I remember to find out. But, yeah. So just curious to figure out where, what that's about.
Yeah, I can do that, this is not responding, so I will respond to you guys.
Okay. I think if there's anything else that we needed to talk about for. We adjourn. Something right now, so, um, do I have a motion to approve this week's expenses?
So move.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero, um, public comment, seeing none. Uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I will second, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero, one forty-one. Okay, I owe you some phone numbers.
Oh.